All right, thank you all for joining us for our Commissioner briefing meeting. Call this meeting to order. Commissioners, are there any additional items that folks would like to have on the agenda for our briefing meeting today in addition to those that are published here on our agenda If there are not, then this will be the agenda we follow for this meeting. All right. Quick review of what we're going to cover, we're going to have a COVID-19 update, we're going to have an update on the Buncombe County Schools Facility Needs Survey, have some information about the FY22 planning with fire districts, and an update on tax collection. So let's get started with the COVID-19 update. Anne Stacey Saunders and Fletch to over here to help us out.
So I'm just going to check with Max and make sure that the monitor is not working still and to use my laptop, is that true?
And also, I'm sorry, meant to mention, due to the weather, Commissioner Edwards cannot be physically at the meeting, but she is participating virtually with us for the briefing meeting.
Thank you.
Frozen.
We begin at a normal PC restart, so next year.
If he wants me to proceed, I can just use my, as long as you all can see it.
Just two seconds.
Okay.
We're so close to being back up.
Look at that, just like magic. All right, so thank you so much for the opportunity to address you as a board and the community today with a COVID-19 update. We do continue to see improvement in our locally monitored indicators. And as of today, there have been 13,469 confirmed cases of COVID-19 identified in Buncombe County. Additionally, there have been 253 COVID-19 related deaths. We are seeing about 98 new cases per day coming into our workflow. That is down quite a bit from 112 new cases just about a week ago and considerably different than just a few weeks ago where it was close to 140 new cases per day coming into our workflow at the Health Department. Additionally, new cases per 100,000 per week has also decreased since the last week. This time last week, the new cases per 100,000 was about 286, and now we see that indicator at 255. This has significantly decreased from just a few weeks ago when new cases per 100,000 were hovering around 400s. And this is just the state visual of the new cases per 100,000 per week, and you can see us over there, we've moved from a very dark blue to now a very light iteration of that color. The percent positivity continues to decline as well. Our percent positivity today is 6.1%. This is a very different number than about a week after New Year's when you heard me say we hit a high of 12.5%, so considerably different. Our current rate is lower than the 8% that we saw at the beginning of the surge, and while not 5% or below, which is what we desire, this is very encouraging in that we're headed in a more favorable direction. And again, this is just the state visual of that, and you can see we used to be a much darker shade of mauve or pink, and now we are a much lighter shade. And then our regional hospitalization data, I won't spend too much time here because we do have our mission hospital partner, Dr. William Hathaway with us today, but regional hospitalizations continue to show improvement, and trends are showing a significant decrease in hospitalizations over the last few weeks. And then this is our updated metrics. You can see here the new cases per 100,000 per population per week, again, was 255, and while that's still in the red zone, that is significantly down from where we were earlier in the month, and we saw that change about another, decrease about another 11%. So I can tell you, when we look at the Epi curve of new cases, we are definitely seeing that Epi curve start to bend. As mentioned previously, the percent positivity is 6.1%. We are starting to approach our desired state of 5% or less. We saw that change by 1.4 percentage points from week to week. Testing remains really high in our community. We like to see that indicator about 2,500 or more, and we have consistently been higher than that for months now, and we continue to see that here. COVID-19 related deaths per 100,000 also saw a decline from last week, and that has, that actually saw a more than 70% decline, and again, just small data sets, use some caution, but overall, from week to week, that is showing significant decline and going back into a more favorable direction. And again, I won't spend too much time on the hospital data since we do have Dr. Hathaway with us, but the percent inpatient hospital beds occupied by COVID-19 continues to see a decline and is 11% based on current numbers, and the percent ICU beds occupied by COVID-19 saw a decrease as well to 19%. Just a reminder about the vaccination prioritization plan, and then I just wanted to give you a quick update about vaccine rollout. And so we've administered about 11,625 vaccine total. About 88% of those are first doses and the remaining are second doses, and as you'll remember, we just started doing our second dose administration not too long ago. I just wanted to have a reminder for folks that we administer our first doses primarily at our AB Tech site and second doses at our drive-through site currently at Reynolds High School, and we are very thankful for the partnership between us and AB Tech and Buncombe County Schools. Those very helpful partners are critical to the success of our vaccination operations. I wanted to mention that we did receive a site visit from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to learn more about our operations locally as a best practice for other vaccine providers. So kudos to our vaccine operations and logistics team that worked tirelessly to plan, implement, and execute our vaccination clinics, and they are running very well. You might remember that North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services last week announced a new process for notifying local providers, local vaccine providers of their weekly allocations. So beginning last week, North Carolina DHHS provided local vaccine providers with their baseline allocations for the next three weeks, and that's what you see here, that vaccine expected today is 1,950 doses, and we expect that same amount on or around February 9th and also on or around February 16th. This is an improvement in the process which allows us to plan further out, so we are glad for that. And as I said, we'll be receiving 1,950 doses each week for the next three weeks, and you might remember that on average prior to now, we were receiving just about 975 doses a week, so this is an improvement for us. We will have about 2,000 first dose appointments each week, and you can see here that for this, this week, we have 2,240 scheduled appointments. For the week of February 8th, we'll have 2,040 and expected to schedule 2,040 for the week of February 15th, and that essentially matches our allocation. We know that we get a few more doses out of each one of those vials, so we estimate that to be around 2,000. Did want to provide an update that we know that there's lots of interest in vaccine progress and what we'll be launching tomorrow on February 3rd, Wednesday, in the afternoon, will be our vaccine infographic while, and this will, this will be on our website until DHHS revises their dashboard to have it a little bit more localized so where, where we can customize it to Buncombe County. They're working on that, but not quite there yet, so this will, this will serve our purpose locally until that, those changes that are made at the dashboard level. But it will include total vaccines received for the week, total vaccines administered, first dose appointments scheduled this week, meaning Wednesday to Wednesday, because that's how shipments come in, and then where we are in the waitlist so that folks out there in our community know where we've gotten down to. And then just to talk a little bit about the standby list for vaccine, this was a really, you know, of interest not too long ago about what, you know, folks want to know what happens to those extra doses that you have at the end of the day, and so every, every dose of vaccine must be used. We do not waste. Wasting a dose is not an option, so we did create a process using our existing waitlist to help us with the end of the day doses so that there is no waste. And typically, this is only a few doses a day. We're not talking about lot, many at all. Typically, it's going to be five or less. Once immunization appointments are scheduled, and currently we're scheduling about a week out, the standby vaccine lead, one of our lead members pulls 20 names from those who are next on the waitlist, so the folks who haven't gotten scheduled yet for an appointment but are up next, and they contact those folks and see if they can present to one of our vaccination sites within 20 minutes should we have extra doses. Those names are then shared with our nurse leads, who are our vaccination leads at each of our sites, and then at the end of the day, if we do have a handful of doses left, they'll work down that list, and we do, we do gather 20. We never really have 20, but that's in case we can't get somebody, we keep going so that we have some backups to the backups. And then people remain on the standby list until they're contacted for a standby vaccine or their immunization appointment is scheduled, and then we move down further on the waitlist for the standby. If you are called to be on the standby list and, and said, hey, we might have doses at the end of the day, and we don't actually end up having enough doses at the day, or we don't have any at the end of the day, which is also ideal, you do not lose your place in the waitlist. You're just on that standby list because you told us you could get there within a few minutes. And just a reminder, there's never a need to show up at the vaccination sites in hopes of extra doses, just, this is our process to be able to utilize the waitlist that we have implemented already, and we'll let you know how that's going. With that, I'll stop for a second, see if you have questions for me before I turn it over for Dr. Hathaway, or I can entertain them at the end.
I just want to say thank you for the dashboard and getting that implemented. I think that will really, people will appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, great work on our communications team and our, our folks at the, our vaccine operations and getting that together, so thank you for that.
How far have we worked down the, since we created the waitlist a week or two ago, can't remember exactly when we started it, how far are we down the waitlist thus far? Because folks have numbers, right?
That's right.
Have this sense of like where they're at. Where are we at currently?
I believe we're somewhere in the 4,000 to 6,000 range, if I got the update today, between 4,000 and 6,000 range.
That have actually received a vaccine or that have received an appointment?
That will be receiving an appointment. Yeah.
That will be receiving an appointment. So, okay, and so the folks below that have not yet, with, and with the vaccines for the next three weeks, I'm sorry, just to be clear, that, that'll get us through around 5,000 or 6,000 or?
So currently, they're working in that 4,000 to 6,000 range to make appointments. So those are the groups who will be calling to make their appointments. We're still, like, so even though we know three weeks out, we're not opening all three weeks at one time, and I will tell you, there's a little part of me that says, I really want to get that week-to-week notification to make sure nothing's changed, because we, you know, we hear things like the state said today that they're hearing that they may get more allocation, so that might mean that we could open up even more. I think our past experience too, in making sure that 1950 is exactly what we're going to get, and so we typically open those up every week, and so we've already started scheduling for, I think that this week is completely full, and started scheduling for next week, and then beginning of next week, we'll start scheduling for the third week.
So as I've, you know, understood it, the 1950 is what the state's essentially guaranteeing to the county health department, right? And there's some hope, perhaps it will be more, but, you know, this is what we can sort of confidently project. So if we know we're, we have high confidence in that floor number, then why don't we go ahead and schedule out that number of appointments over the three-week period?
I understand the concern.
Right.
I also understand that some counties did not get the allocations they were promised previously and had to cancel appointments. I don't want us necessarily to be in a place where until we get that last notification and that we've accepted that allocation, so even though we see three weeks out, we still have to weekly accept each allocation, because the state is also saying, yes, we're going to tell you three weeks out that this is what you're going to get, but each week, a local provider has to accept that weekly allocation because a provider might not be able to get rid of all of their doses, and they might not want to take on another allocation if they didn't get rid of their week one. That, we are not in that case, so there, even the state has safeguards, and so we wait until we've actually accepted each one of those weekly notifications to open up the appointments.
Okay. So we're confident we can administer them?
Yes.
But we're not so confident the state is going to provide this number?
We want to be sure that we accept the 1950 each time before we open.
I'm still not getting the distinction, like, we're, when we said, we're, I mean, we're going to accept whatever they give us, right? So that's not a question. The question is, they might not really provide this volume, and therefore we'd have to cancel appointments.
Yeah, we just want to be sure that, we just want to be sure that 1950 is what we're going to get and that we open up enough appointments for the, for the vaccine allocation that we're going to get.
Other questions, Commissioners?
I do have a question. I think I can answer this.
Go ahead, Amanda.
I know that over the first day, I was thinking about reopening schools. Do you anticipate hearing further advice from your state about the next phase of progress? Is it possible to begin vaccinating our teachers as part of this? Shockingly, in the last 30 minutes, I've already had a lot of messages wondering what that process is going to look like, and I know it's early, but do you have any, any thoughts, anticipation around what we may know more?
So I'm, I'm still reviewing what the briefing today, the governor's briefing was, because I was in transit here, so I'll review it more thoroughly, but my understanding of their briefing was making sure that school systems understood that the strong schools toolkit is available, does provide requirements and recommendations and precautions and measures for schools to open up safely. There has not been any indication from DHHS that we will be going into Phase Three right now, and I do not have a definitive timeline on that when we'll go into Phase Three, and Phase Three is all frontline essential workers where, where teachers will fall, so I do not have any more information than, than that at this time.
Thanks, Stacy.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
I had a question.
Sure.
A question for you that I was going to ask Dr. Hathaway as well, but the thing in the news right now is, is these other variants of the, of the virus, and I feel, in my observation, that there's been a lot of panic around it, and, and media caused confusion around what we should think about them, and I guess I just wanted to ask you, you know, how you're thinking about the changes in the, in the virus and how, you know, how the, more importantly, how the community should, should think and prepare and, and, you know, plan the next couple of months of their, of their lives around that.
Sure. Thanks for the question, and I'll be glad to let Dr. Hathaway answer it as well. So, we're hearing a lot about them. I will tell you that the, what we also hear is the same things that prevent, you know, our original novel coronavirus strain are the same things that are going to help prevent any variant as well. So, as we talk about vaccines, I can't help but always, always say to folks too, that we are a long ways off from vaccines being available to every person in our community. So, until then, you still do have to practice the three Ws. That is your mask-wearing, your social distancing, keeping six feet apart, and washing your hands often, limiting your interactions. Those are the same things that are going to help reduce any transmission. And I believe Dr. Fauci said, you know, one of the best ways to make sure, you know, a, a virus has to be able to replicate in order for it to, to then mutate and, and become a variant. So, the more that we stop transmission by our own actions, the better off we are, and that gets us closer and closer to more vaccine supply and better distribution of vaccine and to better protection as well. But we're still learning about them. Do you want to add anything from there?
Thanks for that question, and thank you, Stacy, for all your information that you provide, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here, as always. With respect to the variants, they do give us a lot of pause. We know that viruses, by their very nature, are prone to mutation, and for the general public, mutation is a change in the genetics of the virus that then changes how the virus looks. And in order for our bodies to fight off the virus, we produce antibodies that are affected by these mutations. And so, some of the mutations make it a little bit harder for the vaccines that we have created to fight off the antibodies, or fight off the virus. That's our biggest concern right now. We have good news in that regard. The, the best news is that the, the variant that we've heard about from the United Kingdom appears to be very susceptible to our current vaccines, and so, there's not a lot of change that needs to be made for those. And that the variant that gives us concern that comes from South Africa and was found in South Carolina recently is susceptible, the antibodies we produce neutralize this virus, just not quite as strongly as they do the, the original strain. So, the bottom line is, I think as Stacy said appropriately, our best defense right now that everybody can do each and every day is the three Ws. The second best defense is your spot, your shot, get your vaccine when you're able to do so, and that even if it doesn't afford 100% protection, it'll afford, afford great protection and minimize the severity of the illness. So, we encourage everybody to get their vaccinations when, when that, that's available. And then, last but not least, our ability to change the vaccines moving forward to account for these mutations is very good, and we believe that by simple changes in how we produce the vaccine will allow us to give a booster that'll be effective against these. So, while it gives pause, it's certainly not a reason for great concern off the bat from my perspective.
Thank you.
I did want to provide, I don't know if the slide is available, just a brief update about where we stand with hospitalizations at Mission. I know there's been considerable concern, given our role as the, not just the Buncombe County provider for hospitalized care for all patients, but also for the 18th County region. And it's interesting, I, I think this graph speaks volumes. This is a graph that shows the number of hospitalized patients we've had since what I consider the dawn of the pandemic, which was back in mid-March, March 17th was when we had our first patient admitted to Mission Hospital. The blue line are the total numbers of hospitalizations over time. The orange line is the number of patients we've had in the ICU, and then the gray line, I'm a little bit colorblind, so I hope it's gray. It's, it's, it's not blue or orange, I know that much, is, is, is the patients on ventilators. And I think what's really interesting and telling, this graph really tells us a lot of different things. Number one, the, the cases that we experienced in the summertime period, which is about a third of the way, it's that first meaningful hump, was about 40 per day in our hospital, and we were really, that was very concerning to us. We predicted the long, dark winter that was coming, Dr. Fauci predicted that, and you'll see where that steep rise in the curve takes place. That's what happened when we moved indoors in the cold, and that's what happened when we were socializing during the Thanksgiving holidays with each other. And we saw a straight upward rise right through Christmas, a little bit of a drop, and then right up again to the New Year holiday. The good news is that, of course, you can all tell that we've crested and we're on the downward slope, and so, that's encouraging, and we're down to numbers that we haven't seen since the beginning of December. So, I share this to say that, you know, last time I was in front of the commissioners, I was predicting that we would rise above 180 or 200. I've, I've, I've never been more happy to be wrong, to be honest with you, and we didn't do that. In part, that was because of the social distancing, but I think that's good news. I don't think this drop demonstrates anything to do with vaccinations yet. We've just vaccinated too few people, and I'm sure people have that question, but it, it certainly has gone down. Now, there is absolutely no reason this curve won't go back up. We've seen up and downward slopes throughout the course of the last year, and that's the other reason I wanted to share it, is to remind people that just, you know, you know, what goes up must come down. Well, we hope it stays down, and it can go up if we're not careful. So, it's, it's a, it's a reminder to all of us to, to be prudent and judicious in how we behave, despite the downward trends. Questions I can take? Thank you. I appreciate being here.
Thank you for being here.
One more that I wanted to address before I left, because I know Commissioner Sloan had asked about the long-term care facility program in previous meetings, and so, I did want to give you what update I do have about that before ending our, our presentation. As you're aware, that there's a federal pharmacy program with CVS, CVS and Walgreens that takes care of long-term care facility, many of the long-term care facilities. And they have received what they, they receive an allocation off of North Carolina's federal allocation to run that program. The dashboard is showing that that, I think the last time I checked, was a little over 50% administered, and that's causing some great concern. And so, I did, I was able to get a little bit more information, which is that the federal government did do a one-to-one, meaning 100% occupancy for dose allocation. So, those, that, that program received allocations based on 100% occupancy. We know that that's not actually true, that some of our long-term care facilities might have 70% to 80% occupancy. So, there's a little bit of skewing because of having to allocate based on 100%, but that's not true value. And then, I also wanted to add that in talking with state partners about it, what we're finding too, is that through that program, long-term care facility residents are, we're seeing an uptake of about 80-some percent, if not higher, of the vaccine, whereas in staff, it can range anywhere from 30% to 50%. So, they are very hopeful in the second rounds that they'll be able to encourage more of the staff through vaccine confidence to go ahead and, go ahead and get vaccinated. So, I hope that helps answer some of the questions.
Yeah, that, that really does. Thank you. I guess the only other thought I would have is, is about the local, you know, our local effort to, to, to improve those numbers, and do we know anything about our long-term care facilities here and their success?
Yeah, and so, I can pull, I can actually tell you that of the federal, so not all long-term care facilities are covered by the federal program. There were several that we had to cover as well, and we've made great progress through that. We had a few that, you know, the residents in the facility, when they were small, they didn't want, don't, did not want to participate. But overall, we're having good participation within that one. I'll get those numbers for you and present next time for you, what that looks like on our end, and I'll see if I can get a breakdown of the Buncombe County federal program.
Yeah, that'd be great.
What that looks like.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I have just one follow-up question, Stacy. Would it be possible, and if it's not here in the meeting, that's fine, but maybe an email could be sent around just to verify where we are on the waitlist right now, and then, you know, since we do, and I understand we're not, while we're not doing the appointments, because there is some, you know, there's just some question about how much is going to arrive. But if we could verify like where we're at, which ones have been scheduled, so that as folks are kind of hearing this information and the, what we're hopeful we're going to get, they can kind of start thinking about where they, you know, where they might be getting on the list, because, you know, different people make plans and things like that, so it would be helpful.
And I do think the, I'm sorry?
That would be the dashboard.
Yes, the infographic that we shared today, that will be launched tomorrow, does have a waitlist area that says, right now, we're working on from this number to this number.
Okay, so that'll be there. Okay, thank you. All right. Perfect, perfect, perfect.
Thanks for the question.
Yep.
I can add one more thing.
Sure thing, Dr. Hathaway.
Oh, sorry. You're coming behind me.
Hiding behind you, exactly. Stalking.
So, just with respect to vaccines, and I think some of the data that we have at Mission is helpful. We received a fair number of vaccines early on, and we've vaccinated about seven or eight, between 7,000 and 8,000 initial doses. The vast majority have gone to our frontline healthcare workers who are COVID-facing. We've also vaccinated community healthcare workers who are not part of our medical staff, and then, we actually did a few vaccinations in the Shiloh community this last week. Interestingly, our uptake rate in our staff, which I think is telling that they should be the highest and most informed people, is 53%. So, to me, that is a tragically low number. We are at a point now where we, it's, in the past, we had ample vaccine, our, our supply, we, we get 300 a week from the state, so we're very limited in how much we're getting. But in the past, it was unlimited and relatively speaking, and we've only had a 54% uptake rate. So, it's clear that we need broad-based, widespread community efforts to get people to take up the vaccine, because I think it'll be even, even lower in the community. If you remember, the numbers that Dr. Fauci and others of us have talked about repeatedly for herd immunity, meaning when enough of the people either have suffered the disease naturally or have been vaccinated, is about 70%. So, it's going to be a long time before we hit those numbers unless we can improve the vaccination rate. And, and just so you know, we shared, I think we shared three trays of 1,000, just under 1,000 doses with Buncombe County that we had, that we couldn't get into people in a timely fashion. And so, at the state's request, we shared them with Stacy, and we shared thousands others throughout the 18th County region to make sure that we got as many and as quickly as we could.
Thank you. A question, maybe this is one y'all could kind of preview a response to, I'm sure it's in the works, but how are you all thinking about the kind of public education campaigns that could help encourage people? And I'm thinking partly about a conversation that Dr. Abbott had with us a couple of years ago, when there was an outbreak of chickenpox here, and she kind of took a deep dive in presenting some of the challenges that come up around encouraging folks to get vaccines and, and how there's sort of a lot of needles to thread in those conversations. So, anyway, I just wonder if you could share what y'all are thinking and, or at least a preview, and maybe later down the road, we could get more information.
So, a couple of fronts. One, the state has worked a lot on that too, done a lot of polling and researching and worked with a national group to help with some messaging that we can pull from that as well. And then, locally, working through community stakeholders and, and community health workers as well, to make sure that we're getting vaccine confidence out there. And then, many of our tried and true sort of communications too, through social media, regular, you know, doing regular media outlets as much as we can, newspapers and our own website, but also continuing to do the Let's Talk series as well, so that folks, it's, it's not always me talking about it, it's, it's folks that you might see in your neighborhood or at your church or in your workplace, talking about it too. And so, helping to normalize that this is, you know, getting the vaccine is, is, you know, as Dr. Hathaway said, you know, take your, take your shot when it's your spot and normalizing that, that this is what we do to help get us closer to the end of the pandemic. And I think that we've been trying really hard to work through what it is to normalize that and to increase, not to sort of, to also, also increase vaccine confidence, that there's safety in it. You know, we're still dealing with that folks are not so sure about how quickly it happened, and so, making sure that we put messages out there that folks realize that it did happen quicker than it normally does, but that doesn't mean that it happened, that any of the steps were removed. All the steps were still there, we just, we did a lot of quality improvement as a, as a nation and figured out how to do it a little bit faster, so that folks understand that. We recognize that we're going to have early adopters, and that we do know that we have some folks who are going to lag. They want to see, they, they want to see other people doing it first, and we've heard that, that they want to wait. And so, you know, we're hopeful that it won't take them too long, and that when it is their spot in the phases, that they'll not wait too long and, and join us. But trying to hit, hit communications on all kinds of different fronts and get in front of different, different types of groups and use different messengers, so that it's not just me talking about it or Dr. Hathaway talking about it, although we do know that a lot of times, that message is best received from a medical provider or professional, but also just using your neighbors to be able to say, I got my shot, and normalize that a little bit more.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you all.
All right. If there's nothing else on this item, then I think we're ready to, and Dr. Hathaway, thank you again for being here. Ready to go to the next item, which is a discussion of Buncombe County Schools Facility Needs Survey, and we have?
Tim.
Tim is here, and thank you so much, Tim Fairley, for being here to discuss this item.
Thank you, commissioners, for your support of Buncombe County Schools. Dr. Baldwin planned on being here, but he needed to participate in the governor's meeting this afternoon, so he sends his apologies, and again, his thanks for your support for Buncombe County Schools. Every five years, NCDPI requires every LEA to report back to them based on their survey and their forms, information about school buildings, their membership, the, the needs, capacities, a lot of information about the building, what year were they built, how is the accessibility in those buildings? And we believe they use that database to make a case for bonds and such. So, I'm going to give you a very brief presentation, a little snapshot samples of this report. You do have a one hard copy, it's over 600 pages. You have the summary reports, and, and there is a link that your staff has to a PDF of the report, so you can dig into it as deeply as you wish. So, the first part of the report is concerned with membership and capacity. Membership is the number of students in a school, and capacity is the ability of that school to house a number of students. So, this is a summary sheet that you're seeing. You can see that we, we, we have a projected membership in five years of 23,360 students, which is, is not really a problem for us. Capacity is defined by DPI, they have a formula, but I do want to qualify that in that DPI only counts the needs in a school for those programs that are core programs. You support and fund other programs in the school. We have art and English as a second language. We need to provide spaces for those students. So, this DPI report is kind of a one-size-fits-all capacity report for all schools, but we do track what we call our functional capacity. If you folks are funding a position and they need a space in our school, we track the. If you folks are funding a position and they need a space in our school, we track that, make sure there is a space, and if that reduces capacity, it does. And it's true, the Buncombe County Schools' functional capacity is going to be less, but we're in real good shape as far as membership goes. So this report looks at zero to five years, current to five years out, and it also has a section of six to 10 projections. And you're seeing the school-by-school capacities, and you're looking at what some of the facility needs are. So our projected, our current capacity according to DPI, and I'll qualify that, is 30,983. It's, I believe it's around 28,000 for functional capacity, but you can see our enrollment is 23,360 projected in five years, and it's really very consistent. We're not gaining too many students, we're not losing students in Buncombe County Schools like we were, really due to the charter schools and other options. That has pretty much leveled off. We're in good shape in Buncombe County Schools, primarily because over the last few years, we've built a number of intermediate schools, which are fifth and sixth grades. They were mostly built to accommodate issues at middle school overcrowding. But the side benefit was that those schools took the fifth grade out of every elementary school. That gave us some capacity, which turns out we've needed because more recently, the state has put a limit on the number of students that can be in a kindergarten to third-grade class. So we've had to reduce those numbers of kids in each class and taking some of that capacity that was created by the intermediate schools and creating more K through three classes. If you have questions, you can ask anywhere along the line here. So we're in pretty good shape. You're not going to see new schools being requested to be built, minor additions, mostly renovations. And those additions are primarily because of that K-three class size reduction in just a few schools. So this is just a look at some of the building information. We ask our principals every year to map out on their school plan exactly how they're using their school, and that affects capacity. It, capacity changes by the use. If, for example, you have several special needs classes, they only can house 12 students maximum, whereas a regular class, depending on the grade level, may be anywhere from 17 to 25 students. So if we have a school that has a lot of special needs students, that capacity may reduce over time if we add those types of uses. So I've put up WD Williams Elementary because this is one of the schools that has a lot of development around it, is pushing its capacity, and it was an open-plan school. This is a school that we will, we're studying right now, and we'll be going to our School Capital Fund Commission to look at doing renovations to accommodate that K-three class size reduction. The projected increase in membership, we don't know, especially with COVID, how many students are going to come back? Maybe more students will stay in that kind of virtual realm. So we're in a waiting position, but because facility solutions take so long for recognizing the issue, the design, the budgeting, the funding and the building, we're trying to get out in front of that and doing an advanced planning study for this school. So each school has a capacity calculator like this. It looks at the number of classrooms, but also the core facilities. If we have a very small cafeteria, for instance, that can't accommodate the number of students that the classrooms can, that would reduce the capacity. We're in pretty good, excuse me, we're in pretty good shape there. We have a couple of schools that cafeterias are a bit small and they have to have, you know, they just start lunch a lot earlier. But in general, we're in very good condition. The next part of the report is the Facility Needs Survey, and those are, in this report, what we are reporting is the large, big-ticket capital needs that would go to the School Capital Fund Commission. That's Article 39 funding. There is another portion of sales tax, Article 4042, that we also use for capital improvements. Those are generally the smaller improvements, they're not reported in here. Ends up being between 15 and 17 million dollars per year that we use for smaller projects like carpeting, painting, whiteboards, technology, the type, you know, maybe some window replacement, smaller roofs. Large-ticket projects go into this report and go to the School Capital Fund Commission, and we deal with those smaller projects through the Article 4042 prioritized process that we do with the school board. So this is a summary sheet of the up to five-year capital needs, and we report to you 81,672 dollars and change of capital, of known large-ticket capital needs for the next five years. We understand that our needs outdistance the funding, but we try to plan and make sure we can prioritize. And again, we appreciate the work with the School Capital Fund Commission and you to address our most significant needs, and we will phase projects as needed and address them in a prioritized manner. And again, we're in fairly good shape. So this, the capital needs, and again, we're looking at Williams, you're not going to see many additions in here. Williams could be a school that may need an addition if the development in the area proves out and exceeds our expectations, but we're not requesting that at this time. However, that school is an open-plan school and for safety and security, for the instructional environment, and for simply updating a school that has really seen very little attention, it's kind of worn out. The primary areas that you'll see reporting, reported needs are safety and security, number one. You'll see renovations of the mechanical equipment, and the infrastructure is very large. Improvements to the educational environment, such as this school and a couple others that are open-plan schools where we have very little to no acoustical separation between classrooms and such. So those are the type of big-ticket things. We have roofs and paving that are significant. We have almost 4 million square feet of roofs, so in just, if roofs last 25 years, we need to spend about $3 million a year just to keep our head above water in something as simple as roofing. So and there's another section about renovations, and there's where you see in WD Williams, a significant ask broken down by their formula for improvements to that school. It remains to be seen exactly what this will look like once we complete the advanced planning study and we develop a phasing plan and determine what the timing will be. We will work with the School Capital Fund Commission to try to address the issues at this particular school. And then they also ask for six to 10 years. That's a lot of crystal ball, that six to 10 years is really hard to know. We report 63 million dollars in known issues. We know it's going to be bigger than that. Things don't always last the lifespan that you expect them, and there will be other things like school capital, or the K-three class size reduction that we just can't predict. But it's what we know at this time. I'll end it with information about the meaning of this report. This report has been certified by the school board, it's required to be. And the reason I'm presenting to you is that we are required to make our needs known, the school system is required to make their needs known to you, the county commissioners. By certifying this report, which is required, you're not committing to spending that money, you're not committing that you agree with the needs. All you're doing is signing that you have seen them. So I hope that lowers your blood pressure a little bit.
I think we can sign off on having looked at it.
That you have seen them. But again, really appreciate, we feel like we're in really good position compared to most school systems across the state. We have a great relationship with you, and you've been supportive, and we're looking forward to continuing that. Any questions?
All right, thanks, Tim. I think you did a great job and answered all of them before we even had to ask them. Thank you so much. I did have one question, I don't know, maybe, Tim, you're, I know you're with the county schools, but, so every district prepares this specific report, so the, I assume the city school district has prepared an equivalent report, is that correct?
They're probably in process. It's a pretty massive report, and with COVID, a lot of school systems are very much challenged by it, so I can't speak to where the schools, the city schools.
And when do they need to be submitted?
They want them at the first of the year, they really want them in January.
So everybody's been working on them now.
Yeah.
Anyway, so the great information here, I mean, I think it'd be great to hear from the city schools around the same report, I'd love to see the same report.
Yes, we will reach out to find out their timeline as well.
Yeah.
But I don't know, like you said, everybody's been challenged trying to get it completed, but we would find out their timeline so we can also schedule on the briefing, so you would hear their needs as well.
Great, thanks. All right. Next up is the FY 2022 Planning with the fire districts, and.
Hey. Jennifer's.
Do I look different? Does it still have Rusty?
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure.
I'm actually filling in for Rusty today, so we'd like to give credit to Rusty. Rusty has done the bulk of the work around the information that I'm getting ready to share, so he's done a really great job. So today, we wanted to provide you with an update as to the work that we've had the privilege to engage with the fire districts around capital planning, as well as review a proposed timeline for the fiscal year 2022 budget development specific to fire districts. And then Tim Love will provide you with a brief update as to the progress on fire service district agreements that are set to renew for July 1st. As a continuation of the work that Buncombe County Fire Districts, and in conjunction with Tim Love with intergovernmental relations, began last fiscal year with a rollout of training through the WNC Pathways Organization for Fire Districts around training, around financial topics, as well as board best practices. The county budget staff has had the opportunity to work with fire districts to offer training and support for the development of a five-year capital plan with each fire district. In September, we met with and launched a capital planning training with fire chiefs, and then invited any staff or fire district board members who were interested to review the training as well. It was provided in an automated format made available on our county site for the districts and staff to review. We scheduled one-on-one sessions during the months of October and November to be available to provide support for any questions related to the training and in the development of their capital plans. I'm happy to report, we had really strong participation, we had 18 districts opt-in, so we did meet with 18 districts, reviewed templates that they had created. They were terrific in gathering all of the information of their inventory of assets to try to map out that five-year plan. So we're appreciative of the work with the departments in developing their plans, as well as the opportunity to work with them in this process. For this fiscal year, it was voluntary, Tim will speak later around the agreements, but the goal for the submission of fiscal year '23 budget is that all fire districts will have a completed five-year capital plan to be submitted with their annual budget Any questions on that? So we wanted to just kind of briefly review a proposed timeline for fire districts reporting. This year will be unique, so the same as the county. When we work to establish a tax rate, the budget office, in conjunction with the county manager, will prepare what is the revenue-neutral calculation. We spoke briefly about that at the board retreat. Along those same lines, fire districts will have a calculation for their revenue-neutral rate as well. So wanted to make sure that we were establishing a timeline that helped us take into account plenty of time for review and discussion. So we anticipate providing to the fire districts by March 15th our internal revenue projections, we worked to try to provide them with information around what the sales tax and the property valuation revenue could potentially be for each district. And then by March 31st, we're asking that fire districts work to notify us as staff about whether or whether or not they would plan to be asking for a tax rate that would be greater than revenue-neutral. We would anticipate scheduling between April 1st and the 16th a work session with the county manager and those fire districts so that we can gain a greater understanding of what the request is and a justification as to that. This will help the county manager work to make recommendations as she brings forward a recommended budget to you all as a board. The April 30th date is the date that's actually written into the fire districts agreement as to when they would submit their actual, like, budget request to the budget office. Our hope is that May 4th, any districts that are requesting to be over-revenue neutral, which does equate to a tax rate increase, would come before the board during the briefing meeting on May the 4th. And again, this is tentative as we continue to move along in the budget development cycle and timeline, and then an anticipated June 1st public hearing on the recommended budget. Any questions around the timeline? So I'm going to let Tim just give a brief update on the service agreements.
Thank you, Jennifer. This will be brief, excuse me, but I did want to give you an update because we have 19 service districts, and all of the agreements for those service districts are set to expire in June of this year, June of 2021. And so considering we need to provide fire protection services across the county, wanted to make sure you were aware of the latest and greatest. So the basic idea is that discussions are underway with the 19 different service districts. We hope to have something in place prior to March, but it may take a little bit longer. We will use a standard agreement template for all districts so that they're all kind of adhering to the same rules and principles. Won't see a ton of changes this year. In concept, it's going to be very similar, but there are some areas we want to tighten up. Specifically, regulations change all the time. This current agreement was a five-year agreement, and much has changed in the last five years, so we want to make sure we're compliant. Additionally, as some of you are aware, we moved some of our fire districts from, as far as property tax disbursements, into an equal monthly disbursement plan, which the majority of our districts are in. That'll be the standard plan as we move forward, and we've been in discussions with all departments about that. Additionally, tightening up a few areas regarding basis of accounting, just making sure that everyone is using the accrual basis as opposed to other bases, such as cash accounting. And then finally, making sure. And then finally, making sure that all departments have similar policies and procedures in place. So things like conflict of interest, personnel manuals, things like that. Many of our departments already have this in place, but we just want to make sure that it's a part of our agreement, since it is such an important part of public safety in Buncombe County. That said, we're moving forward with discussions in February, and as we proceed, we'll, we'll update you. But overall, it's been a collaborative process. We'd expect it to be as we move forward. Any questions?
How, how long will the new agreements be in place for?
We're still working through that. We are shortening, our plan would be to shorten that agreement to about three years, but we're working through that process now.
Okay, thanks. All right, thanks, Tim. Okay, next is the tax collection update, and Jennifer Pike is going to help us with
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate your time this afternoon to give you an update on where we are with regular property tax collection this fiscal year. For Buncombe County, through January 31st, we had collected 195,954,120 dollars. That equates to 95.94% collected compared to 96.22% collected through January 31st of 2020. So that's a slight decrease of 0.29%. Wanted to give a quick note on what we saw with in-person transactions. With a partnership through communications, we tried to get the word out that, that we had a safe environment, but we wanted to encourage the use of other methods of payment, whether that be online, or a Dropbox, or mail. So we did see a drop this year in in-person payments. Last year, we averaged 500 and, I'm sorry, last year, we averaged 660 in-person transactions on our busiest days of the year. This year, we averaged 538 in-person transactions per day, and that is December 23rd through January 5th, so that is six working days. Due to COVID, we did expand our lobby area, and we also expanded our payment counter. We went from five stations to six, with that sixth being not a payment acceptance line, but more of if a taxpayer wanted to set up a payment arrangement, they would step out of line and someone would come serve them directly. That worked well. We received many positive comments. The taxpayers felt that we had done everything we could to keep them safe and healthy, and the lines still moved relatively quickly. I was, I'm happy to say, we had no lines that stretched outside the building. That's always a concern for me because of our busiest days of the year being the end of December and the beginning of January. So now I'd like to give a little bit of an update on outstanding current regular property tax, current year regular property tax, and last year regular property tax for all districts. So we touched on Buncombe, and I want to give an update on where we are for all districts. We still have 15,560 bills that we have no payments on or an active payment arrangement. That equates to 10,849,463 dollars of property tax alone. This year was our first year billing, what we refer to as gap billing. So that is outstanding registration gaps for motor vehicles. So if someone turns in their tag and the vehicle sets without a registration for six months, the county is responsible for billing and collecting that six months. The state does not do that. So this was the first year that we billed for those gaps in registration. So I included a, a few figures here. We still have 4,336 of those bills that are outstanding, equating to 198,097 dollars. And that, those figures are included in the totals above. So the total property tax due as of January 31st, and this is regular property tax, is 12,813,113 dollars. So we still have some outstanding bills from last fiscal year. We have 2,818 bills that we have received no payment on, and these are not in an active payment arrangement. That equates to 692,786 dollars of property tax. And then we have properties that have both last fiscal year bill outstanding and the current fiscal year bill outstanding of 2,402 bills. Any questions on that? I know that's a lot of numbers.
So do you have any, do you have any sense of what accounts for the outstanding? Are you seeing any specific trends, I guess?
It's a very good question. For, for both years?
Yes, yes, please.
So for both years, what I'm seeing is those are significantly personal property, so manufactured homes and parks, that, that makes up a, a large number of that. And also, where I'm seeing some business personal property, and those are continuing into the, to the current year as well. So.
Do you know, so the percentage collected is a slight drop off, but not huge, right? So it's a microeconomic.
And do you know, in terms of like where we were last year? So currently, we have 12.8 million not collected. Like, last year at this time, were we at a pretty similar place, or is that a, a bigger number?
So the levy this year, we saw a, an increase. So last year, what we had collected was a smaller amount, but the percentage was very close, as you can see. So I feel pretty good about where we are right now. I'm watching it very closely with each passing week, and I'm doing some, some comparisons. Dates, days of the week play a big role. Mondays are, Mondays and Fridays are our heaviest collection or payment processing days, certainly over the, the weekend plays a role in that, people paying online. So while it's a larger outstanding amount, percentage is in line. I'm not sure if that totally answers your question.
No, thank you very much.
Any other questions? So, next step. So delinquent notices for the current tax year were mailed the week of January 18th to property owners that have only current year outstanding tax. This year, we mailed 20,238 notices compared to last year's 16,197. The big difference there are the gap notices, the, the gap in registration notices, because a few minutes ago, on a few slides before, we saw we still had over 4,000 gap, gap bills outstanding. That's what that difference is. On your consent agenda tonight, you will see the resolution to advertise outstanding current year real property tax. That's a process that's guided by statute. I'm planning to advertise that in May this year, which is a month later than I have historically. I'd really like to get a few of those bills cleaned up and paid before we do that advertising. And then I also need to send a notice of advertisement, because that's also a statute requirement. If we're advertising, we have to give notice to the taxpayer that they will be advertised. So I will probably send that notice March or April, depending on how collections are looking. It's better if we keep the taxpayer, if we're fresh on the taxpayer's mind. So I don't want to go through a long gap of them not receiving a notice from us. So that's why I'm, I'm still keeping an eye on, and then we'll decide if I send that notice in March or April. Any questions on those points? Few more. So payment arrangements are always our first option with taxpayers who may not want to pay or may not be able to pay their entire tax bill in one lump sum. Currently, we have 2,244 bills in a structured payment arrangement. We have two payment arrangements, meaning one is less structured, where the taxpayer chooses when they send their payment in, and we may give them a call to remind them. It's, we refer to that as a casual payment arrangement. We also have a pre-authorized debit payment arrangement, where the taxpayer signs an agreement with us, and we draft their bank account once a month. So those are our two payment arrangement options. We have historically ended those in April and May. So April for the casual arrangement, when the taxpayer controls how much and when they send their payment. And then the pre-authorized debit, we end in May. So collection actions for those that have not responded to our contact attempts or have not, or not adhering to payment arrangements, this is normal course of business. This is how we operate. If someone does not respond to us, we will start working through the collection actions that are available to us to collect any outstanding taxes. This year, 2% of our total bill count from last year is still outstanding, and those taxpayers have not responded to our contact attempts. And those are by and large the same number of, they have the same bills outstanding for this year, too. So, so there will be significant focus on those folks pretty early on in the process. I really want to get them on a payment arrangement if they cannot pay those bills in one lump sum, because we always need to keep an awareness that the next bill cycle's coming. I certainly don't want taxpayers to, to get in a bind if they have multiple years outstanding. I also am looking to extend those payment arrangements that I talked about a few minutes ago that end in April and May. I'd like to extend those a little bit longer for those that have been directly impacted due to COVID. I would require some documentation on that, so we handle those consistently and objectively. And again, keep in mind that the next billing cycle is, is, will be coming in August. But that's a change that I want to, to be aware of and think through, because we, we know the community's suffering, so I certainly don't want to forget that. Can I answer any other questions you may have?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, that concludes all the items we had for the briefing meeting. So let's adjourn, and we will reconvene at 5 o'clock for the regular meeting. Mr. Frew?
We did have one additional item, if we had time, and it looks like we do. DOT is looking for a resolution of support of the State Department of Transportation and their economic development people for a, a new exit. Exit 35 would be on I-26. They need that resolution of support of, for any projects that cost more than 250,000 dollars. So we would like to add that to the agenda here this evening at the 5 o'clock regular meeting. And that, again, that resolution of approval just gives them the opportunity to release funding that's already been promised.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll add this to the agenda for, where do you want to place All right, let's, this is for just the planning, planning funds for this project, so if there's no objection, we'll place this on the consent agenda for approval.
No county funds, yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Very good. All right. Now, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at 5 o'clock for the regular meeting.